Wanted a little more.
Right.
Garrett was like, no, I'm going home.
Annie, we have an extra chair up here. Annie. We have an extra chair up here. She's not listening.
One person? Speaking? Okay, cool. And she's in person?
Oh, in person, okay. Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our school board meeting, last one of 2020. Called to order. Uh, 2021, wow. Sorry about that.
Time warp.
Thank you for everybody that is joining us. Um, we have Louis, Heather, Dr. Furman, Jane, and we do not have, um, board member Jana Johnson with us today. She is actually with family, um, so please just keep her lifted as they go through a tough time. Um, so just keep her lifted. And, um, we are going to have a moment of silence and thoughts on those families, um, and those who really have a hard time during this time of year. Typically joyful and we're all happy, um, but for various and different reasons, um, it's not always the most joyful for people. And so maybe if we take a moment of silence to just think of them as they kind of really get through, it's more about getting through the holidays or anything for them. All right, thank you so much. And, um, for those who are able, who stand and say the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we just stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and just looking at the agenda, are there any revisions?
Nope.
None of this? Awesome, and, um, so we approve the agenda, everyone? All right, and then the minutes, we're looking back from our last board meeting and our work session. Any changes or comments on the agenda?
I had a couple of minor comments and I'm sorry, I didn't have to put them ahead of time. And they were minor, but on, um, the, from the meeting of, the November ninth board meeting section to the superintendent comments, I just, I just kind of reacted to their last statement there regarding, um, the closing of school for the Braves Parade. And I want to just, maybe we could just reward that so it is clear that we did not close it for the Braves Parade. It was really because of the logistical complications, that sort of domino effect had an impact on our system because of all the closures around us and that we were actually, we were, we were opposed to, to be self, before myself, I was opposed to having to close for the Braves Parade, so I just, I just reacted because this is, you know, going to be kind of memorializing that meeting, and I think there were some comments to contrary. Um, and the only other comment I have is, um, in the section seven, this is incumbent board members, um, Hans, it's been Carmen Fulton, but I think it should be new board members.
Well, members elect.
Or members elect.
Yeah, something to be affected by, but anyway.
Thank you.
Welcome to them.
I mean, to the minute, excuse me?
See, I told you, you read every word.
Yeah, you do. All right, and do I get a motion to approve the minutes?
With adjustments.
With adjustments.
Yeah.
Look at this.
You're first, with a welcome.
One second.
All right, and board, uh, chair folks, hi as well. Okay, so let's move on to our, um, the best part of our evening as usual is our spotlight.
All right. I'm going to call up to the podium several, um, uh, members of our team. We have Ms. Manassas and Ms. Latonya Henry and Ms. Wanda Nessa. They are coming to us from Westchester Elementary. And Ms. Manassas and Ms. Henry serve as the co-interim principals and have been doing an amazing job taking on carrying Westchester through a difficult year after lots of transitions. Um, so I want to reach out, just a warm welcome and thank you to both of you. And it's good to see you too, Ms. Nessa, thank you. So, it's yours, take it away.
We travel as a team, so. Um, well, good evening, and thank you again today, Dr. Furman.
Um, thank you all so much for inviting us this evening to start the spotlight and to tell you a little bit about Westchester and all the wonderful things that are happening every day at our little school. I'm Kristi Manassas, I'm the instructional coach. And this is Latonya Henry, teaching teacher. And this is Wanda Nessa, our gifted teacher and equity team lead. But Henry and I are also proudly serving as interim co-principals at Westchester this year. At Westchester, we have aligned our school work plan with the district priorities of accelerating student learning, creating a positive culture and climate, advancing racial equity. We strive to have equity live at the center of all the work we do. Just as we frequently ask ourselves, how would you know that Westchester is an EL education school when you walk into our building? We're now asking ourselves the question of, how would you know that Westchester is a champion of equity when you walk into our building? So I'll pass along to Wanda as our equity team lead to share a reflection on this question and where we are on our equity journey.
Good evening. As Kristi was saying, what is the evidence of our equity journey? Through morning meetings, displays, artwork, charts, learning targets and expeditions, there's tangible, physical, real evidence of Westchester's school commitment to the principles of responsive classrooms and to EL education. But what about the evidence of Westchester's equity journey? And it's equally obvious when you walk through our doors. What can someone design from walking the halls and the walls at Westchester that would make it evident that we are who we say we are? A school who is deeply committed to the mission of culturally responsive teaching and learning. So enter our Equity Walk. The purpose of our faculty Equity Walk was to focus our Equity Lands in the Zerber School to confirm or challenge our personal and collective assumptions regarding our efforts toward school improvement and equity in the building. I set up the walk with these three guiding questions to move us to higher levels of thinking and to use our own judgment to determine the answers. Number one, how do I promote allyship and make Westchester more reflective of the greater city of Decatur and the world? What is the evidence of Westchester's equity journey and how is our journey visibly reflected in our building? And finally, what role do I play in ensuring that Black children and children of color have a fairer shot in the city of Decatur than they do in any other American city? Decatur is small and prime and ripe for such work to be done. With these questions in hand, teachers took to our hallways, public spaces and classrooms. Here are some of the questions that they had to reflect on during this walk. What evidence of equity is demonstrated in we's, Westchester's public spaces? Is there evidence of inclusion? What leadership opportunities are available for all students? How does our media center demonstrate equity? How is the learning environment inclusive and reflective of each individual? What is the evidence of cultural high expectations? Is student work visible? Is it some students' work or is it all students' work? How does the learning environment help students develop personal awareness, understanding and acceptance of themselves and of us? What values and beliefs about inclusion does the language of the classroom reflect? And what reflects culturally relevant and responsive teaching and learning? So what was the outcome? Well, here are some teacher reflections. One teacher said, "It challenged me to reevaluate everything about my classroom, from my displays to my books to even my writing prompts and writing workshops, to also celebrations and traditions that I lift up over others." Another teacher said, "I felt uncomfortable, definitely, but also hopeful, a hopeful step closer to a more inclusive classroom." Someone else commented, "I enjoyed visiting other teachers' classrooms, which we never get to walk through, and it was even more powerful to reflect through this lens, they are the home for growth." And that's it, there's always room for growth. Westchester is decidedly a school that is a work in progress toward our equity goals. You cannot legislate equity, it has to grow out of personal consciousness. Therefore, the real work of equity is done on the individual level, and we hope that our Equity Walk moves the needle a little bit closer. All right, it's really hard to follow that, but I will be the closer and try to be assisting. All right, um, the work taking place at Westchester begins in the end with our why and our purpose for teaching. The staff may have started educational, their educational journey, um, for different reasons on a solo mission to empower students, but through trust and commitment, Westchester staff have become crew. And we entered the building with a single mission, to ensure that all students feel safe, seen and heard. As the great Rita Pearson said, "Every child needs a champion." And we are a community of champions empowering the next generation of champions. Um, we would like to end with a video of our students. Um, I feel like it is important to see them embracing our PBIS expectations of being responsible, respectful, safe and kind.
Thank you all for your presentation, that was just wonderful. And it really gave us a picture into what a warm and welcoming school Westchester is. I was just there this morning with our new board members elect and same feeling, you can just feel that warmth and acceptance for all your students in your building, so thank you for creating such a warm environment. Any questions from the board or comments?
Great. That was awesome, thank you so much, guys. Okay, and I believe we have one public comment, um, someone that's actually here in person?
Two people, um, Lisa Johnson. I'm expecting this quickly. Hello, my name is Lisa Johnson. Um, I've been a resident of Decatur for 18 years and I've been a teacher for 26 years. I love living in this community and I love working for CSD. The teachers and staffs at Decatur are committed professionals who are passionate about teaching and working with our students. This school year should be a time of positive change, addressing equity and focusing on student achievement. One way the school board could hear the teachers' voices is by reading the monthly TAC or TAC notes, not sure what it's called. TAC notes are taken by each school's representatives and then discussed with the superintendent every month. These notes detail the wants and needs of staff in every school. When I read the overall report every month, almost every school is asking for similar things. The first common additions, the first common comment is additional teacher support in school. I'd like to start with a success story. At the school I teach at, we have a new position as an ELA intervention teacher. The teacher works primarily with ELA teachers to focus on the students who need a little extra help. They pull the students during class and work with them in small groups. This is not only an example of equity, but also an example of using CSD dollars successfully for the students and teachers. If we could hire more teachers like that to focus on small group development at all schools, can you imagine how much success our district would see? The second common top, common, common topic is the drastic need for more counselors in each school building. This is a very challenging time for all of us, especially the kids. They do not have the development to work through some of the stressful situations. They may have situations at home where they don't have someone to talk with. The counselors at my school have 500 students each, 500 each. If a student is socially and emotionally prepared to learn, they will perform better in class. They will cause less school disruptions and the school system will see greater overall success in test scores and graduation rates. Hiring more counselors to assist students' needs and help reduce possible situations at school is a win-win. The third common comment is the dire need for additional substitutes. And this is not a new issue, this has been going on for the last two to four years. We don't have enough substitutes in the building, teachers are going to be absent or human. Teachers don't want to be absent because there's actually more work to be absent than it is to be present. We need to figure out a way to get more substitutes in the building, whether it's paying them more or allowing someone who's only available for one to two days a month to get authorized. We must do something. Right now, teachers must cover classes for other teachers who are absent. This means missing 504 or IEP meetings, missing our planning time with our coworkers, missing MTFS meetings with the struggling students. CSD student population has grown tremendously in the past 10-plus years, but our school system, in my opinion, should remain small. I would like to see a dramatic decrease in the overall staff at the central office, the Wilson Center, and halt all new hires in that center. And instead, reallocate our workforce from the Wilson Center to our school buildings. We do not need more individuals telling the staff what we need to do, what we need more boots on the ground. Hiring more staff allows the students to achieve success. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Annie.
Well, you know I can't have up an opportunity to speak at a board meeting on my show, so here I am. Share my gratitude with Heather and Louis for their years of service on the board. Heather, you were such a pleasure to serve with on the board. And the, the two words that, that stand out to me when I think of your leadership are two that Dr. Furman shared earlier. But it is your thoroughness and your thoughtfulness. And when you joined the board, I think you really raised the bar for the rest of us and demonstrated the importance of reading every word on every page and paying attention. If nothing else, you made the rest of us look bad. So your, your thoroughness and thoughtfulness, I think, helped, you know, raise the caliber of the board. Nice experiences in a way that mattered, a completely appropriate, helpful, thoughtful way. And, you know, sometimes, um, in this role, I know you, you make hard decisions and you have to have your heart and you have to bring your heart and your experiences with you. And you did that, and because of that, the board made better decisions and did better service by our children and by our community. And so for that, I'm grateful for your time on the board. And Louis, I, you, you were such a pleasure to serve with, um, as well. And, you know, the two words I, I think of, or not words, but maybe concepts I think of when I think of you on the board are, one, that you're just wicked smart and you're courageous. And you could see things on the paper that other people couldn't see. And you could deduce things that other people couldn't deduce. And you had the courage to say things that other people didn't have the courage to say. And you put up with whatever the reaction was to that, and that's important. I think it's important that leaders say what's on their mind and that they have the courage to, to say it. Because if you don't say it and you don't deal with the issue that's on people's minds and you don't ultimately make the best decision. And so I'm grateful for your courage, I'm grateful for your wicked smarts and, um, and what you brought to the board, um, over the past eight years that you've been on it. And I, I have to say on a personal level that I was a better board member because I served with both of you. And you both raised the bar and challenged me during my time on the board to think about things differently, um, and decisions that I made and really helped our board come together and work together in, um, in a very productive way. And I, I have to say that I'm sad, I'm really sad that y'all are, are stepping down. I think that you both are some of the best board members that our district has ever had. And I don't know that our community fully appreciates what we're going to be losing with you stepping down. And I just, I have to say that because you're both, you've contributed so much and you bring so much to the board and there's going to be an absence and there's going to be a void and, and y'all stepping down from the board. I, I don't judge that decision, I've done it myself and I know how this um, but I know, but I'm sad. And the one thing that tempers my sadness is knowing the new leadership that's going to be joining the board. And we've got some great, um, leaders in Carmen and Hans that are stepping up. And my sadness too is tempered, Tasha, by knowing that you're going to be here helping steer the ship. You have risen to such an, such an admirable position of leadership since I've had the chance to serve with you on the board. And I feel like your leadership is really going to be helpful to this board as it navigates a transition during a difficult time, um, with two new board members. And so I'm glad that you are on the board, I'm glad that you have the experiences that you've been having and I'm glad that you've just really risen up to the occasion, um, with your strong leadership on, on the board. So, um, thank you both for, for your service. I will miss knowing that you're on the board, um, but I also welcome you to the other side. Congratulations on your service and I'm reclaiming some portions of your life.
Thank you, Annie. Thank you so much. All right, so now we will move, um, thank you so much for those comments, Annie, and just, it, it's, it's nice to see you in here. Uh, it's not just for a few minutes, so, thank you so much. Um, any other comments on the presentation or anything before we move on to superintendent comments? That's good, okay. Go ahead, Dr. Furman.
Okay, I, I think I am ready to present. Hey, there we go, okay. Uh, well, welcome, everyone, thank you all for being here this evening. Uh, just a few comments tonight, I'm going to keep these pretty brief this evening. Um, did want to thank Louis and Heather, our outgoing board members, thank you guys so much for your service. Public education is my career, it's my life. Um, I truly believe in the public school systems in our nation and that it is the opportunity for us to create a more equitable society for our nation. And school board members serve an important role in that, and you do it selflessly. It's not a paid position for us, you dedicate your individual time and commitment, um, and I think it's one of the most honorable choices a citizen can make in our community. So I want to just thank you both for that service to our students and to our staff and to the community, thank you. Just some general updates from me, um, even though I feel like we just had another board meeting, uh, board meeting like two weeks ago with the break, um, it was busy. Um, want to welcome Hans and Carmen again, they are here again this evening. Hans and I had the opportunity to go to new board member training together and that was a really valuable opportunity for me to, to get to know Hans better and understand his perspective and what he is going to bring, um, his wealth of knowledge and expertise to our board, um, which will be very valuable as we move forward, um, continuing to navigate COVID, continuing to navigate other difficulties in our community that we want to bring together our, uh, everyone and heal our community as we continue through that journey. Um, I also had the opportunity to go to the Georgia School Board Annual Conference. And that was really amazing. What I really appreciated about the annual conference for school board members is the highlighting of student success. I was just blown away how they really highlight students in their program, um, through student spotlights, through a panel that they had, through the jazz performance, it was amazing. But also learned lots of little good nuggets about, um, working with boards and how to operate the school system and that partnership. So that was really great. Um, Lanita and I finished our class, so I think we are well-trained and still learning information as we go, but I feel like we are in a really good spot as it comes to developing our budget as we move forward. Um, and I had my mentor meetup with Dr. Mary Elizabeth Davis, she is the superintendent in Henry County. I've actually known her for a very long time, um, way back when we both worked in Gwinnett County and I was so thrilled when they appointed her as my mentor. Um, her and I chat very frequently, she's got just amazing knowledge and advice and she has just been a really helpful resource for me as I navigate the, the new role as the superintendent. Um, continued with stakeholder meetings as well. Um, probably the highlight was, um, the meetings that I had with students. Um, the first one or two previous students, actually, um, are Decatur Justice Coalition. Um, they, we know have issued some, um, priorities that they want to see in our school. Dr. Huddleston and Dr. Banks and I met with the two students that started the Decatur Justice Coalition and heard directly from them. And we are engaging and partnering with them to see how we as a school system can incorporate what they believe the student perception is on what's needed to improve our school system as it relates to our work with equity, um, and how we can help students understand their role as members of, of our community as well. Um, so that was really great. Um, had our, actually did not attend the student advisory committee meeting, but Dr. Beam and, um, Ms. Burnett attended for me and they helped the students flesh out some of their top priorities on the actions and the, the issues that they want to address and tackle as a student body. Um, so we will be meeting with, bringing that back in January, I'll be meeting with them again and we'll be selecting what are those key top priorities that the students really are passionate about addressing as a student body. Um, also had our COVID advisory teams and the, um, teacher advisory team as well. Um, community outreach, so I attended the Reach ceremony with our students at Renfro and I'm going to highlight those students in a little bit. Also went to our craft country banquet at the high school, that was really fun. Uh, we were, I was able also to announce for the craft country team that we are going, going to be partnering with, um, the city on working on a track over at Legacy Park. So they were very excited to hear about that. Um, we went to the winter band concert as well, um, I got to narrate the nightmare, the nightmare, the night before Christmas with the band. That was so much fun, I was never more nervous to do anything in my life and having to go and practice with the band several times to make sure I had my timing right. Uh, narrated the Night Before Christmas while they played the piece, it was amazing, it was really, really great.
Did they record that?
I don't know, it was fun. Uh, got to, in my working with the staff, I think our big highlight and list is over the past presentation finalized that we shared at the work session in November, um, and then continuing with departments and the schools to look at their budgets, to look at their staffing allocation so that we can make sure we present to the board when we get the final budget ready, um, a very balanced budget, a budget that puts our priorities first and a budget that puts students first. Um, I also was able to tour and, and take Carmen and Han to eight of our schools. We still have two more to get to, but we, uh, gave them tours of each, um, of eight of our schools. We've got the Decatur High School and Fave left to go, but they were able to see all of the buildings and have an opportunity to meet with the principals one-on-one and just hear, um, what are the great things happening in our buildings. So that was a lot of fun as well. And, and then we did host our first cohort, uh, meeting for our Leadership Academy, Cohort Two. That was an amazing meeting to hear from the new aspiring leader group in our school system and get them kicked off, and we have actually our next meeting next week. So we have a great group of teachers on that, and in that cohort. Uh, lots of celebrations. So, let's see, first I want to share our, the solar panels. So we have expanded our solar array over Renfro Middle, um, it's completed. They're still working on updating the dashboard so we can kind of collect the data on how much energy we're saving and what kind of a carbon, um, energy footprint we're, we're eliminating. Uh, but we are looking at But we are looking at possibility of producing about 89.04 kilowatts, which is the largest of solar array in the city of Decatur. So a huge shout out to our operations department for leading this project. The next thing I want to highlight, see if we can watch this video. This is a clip from the basketball game. And two things I want to highlight here. The first thing I want to highlight here is the cheer coach for the basketball team, my assistant, Ashaki. She went to the cheer team of the other opposing team, Clarkson. And I don't know if you've been to a basketball game. Typically, they kind of cheer off each other, like they do talking cheers. Well, she went to the other team and asked them to participate and do a unity cheer. So in the halftime, instead of doing like the kind of cheering against each other, they went out on the court and cheered together. And then at the end, you'll see a special segment of one of our students that is on the basketball team that has special needs. And just an amazing point of how our students make this sportsmanship, not just on our team, but on the Clarkson team as well, helped her score a goal for our team. So let me play this. That's probably number zero. I don't know about you, but that just warms my heart.
That's good.
Love that. Let's see if now I can figure out how to get my. I knew that was going to happen. All right, I'm acting like I have two screens. Nope, you don't want that. Hold on. Play that down. I'm just glad I didn't have like 10,000 unread emails.
How about them brave? Right? No?
Here we go.
Not even important.
That was just worth fall. You tagged me out. Okay. So some more celebrations. We have 35 Renfro students, band students auditioned for All-State Band and District Honors Band. We want to give a huge congratulations to these students for being recommended for All-State Band. They've been recognized for some of the strongest musicians in Atlanta, or in the state, and 27 of those students were recommended for District Honor Bands. We want to congratulate those students and our band program overall. It's a very, very wonderful program. Also want to congratulate Decatur Band students Nina De Filippo and Spencer Mullin. They've had their pieces selected for the Georgia Music Educators Association Competition Contest. Those students have their compositions performed by the Decatur High School Band musicians at the competition, which that will be in January, at the end of January, in Athens. So way to go. We had two students, or I'm sorry, Gabriel and, yeah, two students, Gabriel and Anushri, I want to make sure I say her name right, were selected as winners for the Vuitton Foundation's newly created essay contest, Ground Crew Honoring Unknown Civil Rights Activists. The contest called for Atlanta youth in grades eight through 12 to research unknown African-Americans who have been, who have played a significant part in civil rights, and they, those were nominated for their winning essays. Seventeen of our Decatur High School football players recently earned 5A All-Region recognition, led by 11th grader Kendrick Lanier as Offensive Player of the Year and 12th grader Cameron Wingo Defensive Player of the Year. So we want to congratulate our Bulldogs for a wonderful season. On Tuesday, November 17th, our Decatur High School Athletics Department honored five scholars as they sign national letters of intent to further their athletic endeavors. We're so proud of these students. Sophia Walker will be going to Fairfield University playing volleyball. Quincy Pritchard will be going to Berry College to play softball. Josh Lannum will be going to North Georgia College to play baseball. Brady Jones going to Georgia State University to play baseball. And Brayden Gordon will be going to Muskegum College and to play baseball as well. Also want to congratulate our Decatur Debate Team for winning the Demas Hollywood California Invitational. With the support of their varsity team, Will Coughrill and Aaron Lamb debated 10 virtual rounds over three days. And in addition to winning the tournament, they are now qualified to debate in the Tournament of Champions in April. This is the Decatur Debate First. We want to congratulate the students and thank their coaches for their hard work, and that's Ms. McMahon and Ms. Also want to congratulate our girls and boys cross-country teams. They finished with a tremendous performance this year. Our girls team placed fourth overall, led by Gabby Melbera, who crossed the finish line in the top 10. And our boys team finished first overall in the state, so in the 2021 Class A 5A Champions. Christian Gonzalez repeated as the individual state champion, followed closely by two other teammates in the top 10. Bill Carlton came in third and Jake Westing came in ninth. We're very proud of our runners for all their hard work that they put into this school year, as well as Coach Southers, who gets up like super, super early to go out to try. And they're also going to be writing that Christian and Billy at the Atlanta Track Hub banquet. Want to also congratulate our middle school soccer team. They finished their season undefeated. Their final game was against Towerd Middle School, and they won four to zero. So that was a great win for them to finish their season out. Also want to thank our REACH, our, recognize our REACH Scholars. As I mentioned, I attended that ceremony earlier in November, and that is realizing educational achievement can happen. And this is Georgia's first public and private school championship program. The mission of REACH is to provide Georgia's academically promising students with academic, social, and financial support needed to graduate from high school and college so that they will be prepared for the workforce. City Schools of Decatur thanks our partner at DEF as well for their financial support in this program. And there were six students nominated, Mohammed Atlick, Brianna Atkins, Brianna Griffin, Najim Noor, Jordan Taylor, and Dakota Walker. And finally, want to shout out our girls' flag football team, and their student athletes were recognized as part of the All-Region Team. So great job to our Bulldogs. The first team was Jecane Washington, second team Naomi Bridger and Sierra Patton, and honorable mention Sierra Freeman. So great work on our students and our staff. I just want to also summarize some COVID updates. I did share in my Friday follow-up that we have 92% of our staff is fully vaccinated. I think that's a tremendous accomplishment for our school system to make sure that we continue to provide a safe environment for our students and our staff. Student vaccinations, I've mentioned before, this is kind of a hard number to get our hands on. We're trying to work with the Department of Health to find out how we can summarize the information that goes into the state immunization system so that. Parent advisory and our expert advisory team meetings just this past week and the week before. If you ever want to listen to the meetings or look at the agendas, those are posted on my webpage. And then what we will be working on next with these two teams is developing some criteria to guide decisions going forward on mitigation, such as testing options, test to stay, if we start looking at peeling back mitigation layers, when, what the data might say to lead us down that conversation as we look at spread of COVID in our community. And then also just want to highlight, we are doing weekly, optional weekly screening testing. It is every day, and it's actually right out here in our board atrium, boardroom atrium. It is from 6:30 to 8:30 every single day of the week, and anyone can sign up, students and staff, and come and get their COVID test, rapid test. And if it is a positive rapid test, they also do a PCR test at that time, so you can get two-for-one deal. Okay? Those are my comments. Any questions from the board?
No, I don't think so. Thank you so much. Okay, Furman. My comments will be pretty short. Just wanted to thank the DeKalb County Board of Health and the DeKalb Pediatric Center and O'Kerrs Pediatrics for their continued support and supplying the vaccines to our community. I just want to thank our nurses as well for their care that they provide every day to our students and our community as well. If you are into basketball, just wanted to mention again that we have our City Schools of Decatur Night at State Farm Arena. That's the 19th at 7:30, so that is a great way to kick off holidays if you're into that kind of thing. And remember also to sign your K5 TSC student up for a hands-on enrichment Super Saturday session. So be on the lookout for that information if you'd like to sign your student up for that. And earlier, as you saw, half-board member Annie stepped up so that she could acknowledge the two board members that are stepping down. And so for those who weren't in, who weren't in our reception earlier, those who are listening on Zoom, I just wanted to publicly again thank Heather and Louis for their time and their service. This will be their last board meeting as they roll off. And just some words that I mentioned about Heather earlier was her heart to serve and never doubting that from day one, that that is why she's up here. And we've had a great opportunity to work together so closely this last year as vice-chair and chair. And you really just don't know how much you have to do until you get into that role. And so, you know, I couldn't ask for a better support role in you, Heather. It was, we went through some pretty hard times, some pretty challenging times, but as I mentioned earlier, you are incredibly encouraging. And so I knew I could count on you to just say, we got this and we're going to get through it. So I just wanted to, at our meeting, thank you again for all that you do. Thank you for serving. And on a personal note, I'm glad that we've been able to foster a friendship. And I just wanted to give some of my comment time to Jane.
Yeah, I had the pleasure of thanking Louis. I wanted to extend what everyone else has said about Heather. Her thoughtfulness and thoroughness is often inspiring, and it is not surprising to hear that from former board members because it's rang true of me as well. And for Louis, I thank you, and I thank you then for how much you have given of your time, your expertise, your family, and to the city, you know, since you moved here. You're leaving it a much, much better place in the last two years. You and I have joked have probably been the hardest. And at that GSBA, they shared about, you know, more executive sessions, more time spent, more controversies around the state. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Jane. So just wanted to end with thanking all of our teachers and our staff here at the Wilson Center for all that you've done this first half of our year. We know that it's been tough. It's been overwhelming, and we all are just, we're making it. And so, but you show up every day and you show up for our kids and our students, and I appreciate you for that. And so this is our last meeting before the holidays and before the first of the year. So I just again want to say thank, thank you to you all. I hope that you can get some nice rest and rest it over the holidays and do whatever your heart desires and whatever, what brings you joy and brings you happiness, I hope that you get that in abundance. And I'm excited to start off the new year, start off 2022 with you all with just a fresh outlook and perspective and opportunities to work together to hit our goals for the second half of the year. So thank you to you all and happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and Happy New Year.
Okay, I'll.
Okay, go ahead. Thanks. I want to start by also saying thank you to Louis for serving eight years. You have given so much to our school system, and I really appreciate how much you give of yourself. You speak from the heart. You follow a very strong moral compass, and you are not afraid to say things like they are and to really work hard and to lend your expertise to the situations that we have at hand. You really dug in. You served as chair for at least two years, three, which is a lot. And so you have really invested a tremendous amount in our school system, and we owe you a great thanks for that. You've been great to work with. You've been someone who I can call to talk about many of the difficult decisions that we have made together, and I've learned from you. You are an experienced board member when I joined, so you've also been very much of the support for me and getting me up to speed in the school. So I'm very grateful for you and your support. I prepared a few remarks. I was able to say reception earlier, but I'm not sure if they were shared with the kids, with the greater community. But first, a special thank you for that wonderful reception and to Dr. McCraney, who is the they put together a lovely ensemble that played for us, and the culinary students cooked and made delicious things for us to eat. And so I just am really proud of our fantastic Career Academy and our fine arts program in our schools. Serving on the school board is an awesome responsibility, and it's really hard to describe it to anyone, and no one really knows what it's going to be before you join. And it's never the same from year to year. But I've taken it all very seriously and shown up prepared to meetings and just enjoyed working with the many variations of this board that I've been working with. We've had some really meaningful and difficult discussions and had to make a lot of tough decisions together, but I've always believed that I've served with board members who have the best interests of the students at heart. And despite our differences, I feel like we have 90-plus percentage of things in common because of the fact that we're sitting at this table together. And so I've always come from a place of looking for what we have in common and working together and compromising when we need to. We can't always, we're not always right. We can't always get our way, but I feel like we have been able to be a board that's had difficult, honest discussions, no matter how hard that's been. And I want to thank Dr. Furman, our superintendent, for stepping in. And you stepped seamlessly into the role of superintendent last spring. You brought our year to a strong finish, and you also inspire and lead well and inspire your staff. And I want to give a heartfelt thanks to the principals who lead their buildings. That is a big job, an endless job. I want to thank our amazing teachers who inspire our students for a lifetime of learning. I want to thank our staff who support our students and show genuine care for them in many ways that aren't in their job descriptions. It creates such a wonderful culture and environment in our school. Together, we are advancing academic achievement, equity, and many important initiatives to ensure the continued success of our school district. There is tremendous heart at CSD, and we are really fortunate to have it financed working with our students. And to the community, Decatur is a wonderful community of many supportive families and residents who give so much to our vibrant schools. It really takes an entire community to come together to support public schools, and we couldn't do it without the critical mass supporting the schools in our community. Our kids are really fortunate because the families step up. Our kids are really fortunate because the families step up and the residents of Decatur show up. And as a community, we value our schools. We're willing to invest in the future of our youth and it will benefit, it does benefit all of us. Through my years of service, I'll say, you know, I've served on the S L Ts and school board, but my very favorite has really been when I was room parent. K through five, both years for my girls. And that's because I got to work closely with the teachers and really see how hard they worked and where the rubber meets the road. I also really enjoyed getting to know the kids and really just get a feel for, for our schools. But it gave me a lot of insight into how hard our teachers work and how much they do that also goes beyond teaching academics. Serving on the board has only deepened my appreciation for public education and everything that our schools do for our kids. Not just academics, but nutrition, social and emotional support, extracurricular activities, aftercare, and more. My service to the schools and community will not stop now that my term is over. And I will continue to support our schools. I look forward to volunteering at the middle school and high school some more and volunteering with our wonderful partner, Decatur Education Foundation, and continuing to serve on the Decatur Y M C A board, which is also a wonderful partner of our school system. And there's so much, so much opportunity for so many partnerships in our, in our city. The hardest part about finishing my term here as a board member is just that our work is never done. And that's also the hardest part about serving. This is a job that you could do twenty-four seven and it would never be done. But I'm confident that our board members are going to come on and that our board is going to remain strong and the good work will continue. I thank the community for your trust in me and it's been a great honor to serve. Thank you.
Well, I thought hard about what to say and couldn't decide, which means it's going to be very short. But I, I'm so grateful and thankful for the nice words, you know, back at you. It's been a pleasure to serve with each of you. And I wanted to thank Annie for the very generous comments as well. And it is what makes this possible. It really is a tough job. It's not just the, the time, there's a huge emotional toll of trying to make the right decision and trying to, you know, balance things and come together. It's really hard to do that with five different people. And I'm convinced that five different people actually make a better decision than one really smart person. I think that that's proven time and again. But it only works if the five people can actually talk and communicate and can say the courageous things and know that, know that it's going to be received in the spirit that it's given, which is that, you know, there's a certain amount of trust that you need to have, that you can say what's on your mind, you can say what you think and you know that you're not, people aren't going to think bad of you for it. But you can just put it out there and then we can talk about it together, bat it around, and come up with the decision. It's really hard. It's especially hard with an elected body because you don't pick your members. You know, another kind of a board, you say, well, I think I might get along with that person. I'm going to bring that person in. That's not the way this is. We're thrown together based on who runs and who gets elected. And so then you have to come together and actually have these difficult conversations. And sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. But for the vast majority of the time on the board, it's worked and I'm so grateful for it. And it makes it all possible and it makes it really a joy even when it's hard. And so I have enjoyed my time on the board. It's been a huge part of my life. You know, my, my, both my youngest are graduating, so the school system has been a huge part of my life. And it's been great. It's going to continue to be great. We are confident that we have gotten the best out of Decatur, but it's only getting better. I'm, I'm, the, the, the video that we saw at Westchester, maybe, like, well, shoot, I wish I could do that all over again. I thought, real quick, I retract that. It's, it's, it's really wonderful and it's wonderful to be a part of this and to have been allowed to be a part of it. So I just thank everybody for the support. I know that you are going to continue to strive to get better and better. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your work. All right, so we're going to move on to the consent item. We have the personal report, school nutrition, financial report, and mid-year budget amendment three.
Yeah, I actually wanted to highlight on the personnel report, you'll notice we hired one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight stellar subs to help support our classrooms.
Awesome.
So those are full-time subs that go to the full day to fill in if teachers are out of the classroom. And that actually is reflected in our budget amendment, which is the other one I wanted to make a comment of, is we had to reallocate some funds from the general fund to pay for, to pay the salaries of those substitute teachers because we did hear the need from our teacher advisory council on how hard it is to get subs and to get coverage. And another thing that we also have started this year is paying teachers twenty-five dollars if they give up one of their planning periods to cover classrooms. Because we know if they're giving up their time, we want to compensate them for that. So that is part of the, you know, part of the reason we have to, the amendment. The other thing is we do have continued COVID costs, one of the largest being air filters for our, all the air filters in our classrooms, the air purifiers. And then we did the stormwater systems in Decatur City. We had to pay them a fee for that. So that is another incurred, uninten, unan, unanticipated incurred cost that we had to encumber. So that is the budget amendment. So any questions on consent items?
I just thought stellar meant they were good at their job. I didn't know that.
But yeah, they are really good at their job.
Yeah, right.
Stellar subs that you want in your building every single day.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good time.
I'm assuming that we, we will, I mean, that we actually need more subs than that. So I thought maybe you could just speak to like, what the act, like what the typical need is and how this is maybe filling part of that.
So I have started pulling weekly teacher attendance. And yes, there is on average a significant amount of classrooms that do not have coverage by a sub getting picked up. There is a sub sort, a sub shortage across the nation and we have been impacted by that. We've looked at our sub daily rate, it's very competitive. And subs report that they love working in Decatur. Our kids are great, it's a good school system. I think it's just, there's just not a lot of people out there wanting to substitute teach right now. Part of our way to address that was instead of having temporary people, we'll hire them on full-time. What I've loved as, when I was a principal, about having a stellar sub is that persons in your building, they start to get to know the kids, they know the routines, they know the way of the building. And eventually, some of my stellar subs I've promoted into classroom teaching positions once they have finished their teaching certificate. So it's a way to really grow employees and have more connections in your, in your building. So I find that they're very effective.
Sounds like more consistency for the students. Are, will some of the costs to hire these full-time substitutes be offset by them not having to pay the temporary subsidies going forward?
So the budget is, you know, when you set the budget, we set the budget for temporary subs. We need to make sure we continue to allocate that. Now, if we don't spend as much for those subs, we can push that at the end of the year back into the general fund and it can offset at that time. But to make sure that we have a, a budget ready to get us through the end of the year, we have to allocate those funds.
And as far as the budget for the, do you feel like we allocated enough or are we saying that we?
Yeah, I think we do. Yeah, we've never been short. Yeah, it's just do we get enough subs to actually fill the position?
All right. Any more questions? I'd say the motion to approve consent items.
Move to approve consent items.
Hold on a second.
Second.
All of both ayes. All right, move to approve. All right, so now we are moving on to our items of action, information, and discussion. So we did have our benefits and salary compensation comparison. Wasn't going to be an official presentation on this, some of the questions that we may have had.
Yes. So any questions the board has? Ms. Walker and Ms. Maroon spent a significant amount of time researching, pulling information, following up with other school districts to summarize, I don't know where City School of Decatur lies for comparative salaries, compensation with other areas in the metro, Metro Risa district, which is what we're part of as a school system, kind of how they divide Georgia school districts up. You can see we're up and down in some areas. We looked at principals, we looked at assistant principals, and we ranked ordered them based on salary. We also looked at teachers. I was very encouraged with teacher salaries, showing that we are, you know, compensating our teachers fairly competitively within the district. There is some area for growth, particularly when it comes to some of our non-management classified positions such as administrative assistants, paraprofessionals were the two that jumped out to me. And then on page thirty-two of the report, Ms. Maroon has put together some information on if we want to try to get into the top five for those certain job areas, what the, what the financial impact would be. And then there's also information on page thirty-three about our overall benefit package. I've always called this the hidden paycheck. It's the money you get that you never see in your paycheck, but it's something that the school district pays on behalf of employees. So that is listed in there as well. And then there's just some summaries and conclusions for the board to consider. You know, if we decide as a board or we just want to have a discussion as we move into the new budget season on, you know, do we want to take some of the hidden paycheck and transfer it to the actual paycheck? But that's got pluses and minuses that we would want to flesh out before any decisions are made, also gather some input from the teachers. So my thought with this report is get some discussion on the board, what your thoughts are on these numbers, any questions you have that were left unanswered in the report. And then once we can make some edits or addendums to the report, and then the next phase would be to share this with our staff so they can also share and understand, here's where we are as a district with compensation. If the board made this change, that would impact paycheck this way. You know, what is the perspective of our teachers or staff members on making any of those changes for how we compensate staff? So, and then Ms. Walker are also here to answer any questions about the report as well.
When you've met with TAC, has this been something that's come up?
Um, not, well, of course, everybody wants more money. That would always be great. And we have had the discussion with TAC. I will share this report with them. We have our next meeting in January and get their input on it. So it, yeah, specifically, we haven't answered any questions, but I will be asking them to review it and provide some feedback as we get into January and start having to make some decisions on what do our salaries and benefits look like going forward.
I have a question about, and this kind of went back and forth, the gross comp, I haven't asked, how is that defined in the page twenty or whatever? It's like the next seven pages.
Ms. Maroon or Ms. Walker, you guys want to come up and answer those questions? They are the experts on this report, so.
Sorry.
It's okay. They, they were prepared. I saved them the presentation. I saved them presenting, but I did say they, they have to answer some questions.
Good evening.
So gross comp, starting on page twenty. So the first time that phrase really appears is when we get to the like teacher comparison. And I just wanted to make sure I understood what I was looking at as I went through it.
Exactly. So the gross comp is exactly what year the teacher is in with self and then whatever their certificate is with. So that is the pure gross salary for each district.
So it's only salary? So like if I looked up the scales that exist, that are like, that's the T for third year scale for each one?
Right.
Okay, and then as I move right, so yes, no, pays towards additional benefits?
So usually we look at that as your fringe, fringe benefit, like, as Furman said, like the secret paycheck.
Right.
And so anything that the district is contributing as a district to the compensation, we listed it here. And then also if the school district is paying into social security or a local pension. And so going on to the last column, that is the total report. And this is just saying exactly what the district is paying that employee.
I was under the impression, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that Cobb County did pay into social security? This seems, so that's why I was at, so does that, did we find that was wrong?
Exactly. So right here, this is the information that was coming either from directly from the district or from a metro Risa report. And I did not see that information. So I'm not sure exactly if they are paying into social security or their local. I know back in two thousand thirteen, they were, but I'm not sure exactly how it is and it was not listed in the report. So I didn't want to list anything that was not accurate.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I'll, I'll look into that as well. I know in two thousand thirteen, they made a lot of changes. Okay. So then that total rewards number on the right is where we've kind of taken that salary, added in sort of the additional plus added in either a local pension or a social security number? Is that correct? Okay.
Well, there was a few questions that came through by email. Were those answers, do you remember? I didn't have a chance to look back to see.
Yes, I can, do you remember what question you asked? You're, you're welcome to, to share your questions.
Okay, yeah, the first one was, the other one was, what if, the only other, the only other school system in this list that is paying anywhere near close to what we're paying in terms of the local pension added benefit is Marietta? And I wanted to know if that was also a social security benefit? And it was, why was it a different number? It turns out that that is not. And then my, my last question was around the restrictions and the requirements of what, what, what are, once you're in social security, what is the flexibility about being in it or not? We are, because you're, that we are paying the standard pension benefit that all teachers, that all systems are required to pay for teachers and on top of that, we are, this very day, included in all of these, if I'm not mistaken, is a, a pension benefit that all systems pay into the public.
Yes, which is the teachers' retirement.
But they, they did answer my question.
Well, and thank you for sharing those with the, with the team in case they didn't get a chance to read them as well.
Heather, do you have any questions?
Well, mainly a comment and then a follow-up question. I just think it is interesting to note the large amount that we contribute to health insurance in comparison to all other school systems, many of whom do not contribute any and just also that it is a significant amount contributed to the local pension or social security benefits. And so I think that it's just as valuable to see it listed as total compensation, total rewards. And I hope that then we use that number and share that number apparent and valued as we compare with other districts because it really is much more than just salary to salary because that is tremendous value and sometimes even more because it's, it's tax sheltered and, you know, in such a way. But I do think it's also interesting and important for us to know what teachers want and how they want to see this money. And I did mention that our work session, I believe there was a survey done a couple, two, three years ago. I don't know if other board members remember that. But we did seek that information because there were also other questions in that survey surrounding other intangible, like quality of benefits to their positions that were not also drafted in this number because there are things that our school system does above and beyond required, such as fully funding positions, such as librarians and a nurse for each building and other staff that are support staff and pares and we try to have smaller class sizes. And all of those things cost money. So it really is like a total, a total budget, you know, you have to have the lens over the entire budget to see like what is important to teachers and which of these qualitative things matter a lot and sometimes maybe more than some of the quantitative dollar figures. And so really getting their feedback on where they would like to see us spend that money is significantly and really, you know, really important. I can see that a lot of work has gone into this report and so it's really great for us to have these numbers. Thank you. So that, that helps the board to make these decisions. For gathering all that and helping us see where we sit in comparison to the other districts all around us.
And also with the, the salary statement this year. And also with the salary statement this year, I thought it was very important for all of our staff to know exactly, right, the total compensation of what the district paid for each person. And so I believe that was the first time that they had really seen the whole nature of what he actually pays. So at the end, a lot of people appreciated that, to see exactly where all goes into the compensation.
I don't have too much to add, and I thank you for the report also. The point I was going to make is it does seem to me a problem, and we're calling it hidden compensation. So maybe this is not the wisest way to.
So I didn't want it to be so hidden, so we should have.
We don't want it to be hidden. If it's hidden, maybe we need to bring it out front, you know, put it on the base salary. I understand that some might prefer it, some might not, but we should definitely consider it. And we did this a couple, three years ago. And at the time, it was the same story, which is that we looked at it, and the teacher said, we're the lowest paid in the metro area. We did the total comp, and then we're trying to convince the teachers that they're, it's actually not that bad. And we weren't the top, but we were kind of in the middle. But they didn't realize it, and that is a problem for us. We should think hard about what it's, we're getting the most bang for the buck.
Yeah, we'll share this report with the TAC. TAC then takes it and shares it with their staff, and then they have a protocol to walk their teachers and other staff members through to say, hey, you know, A or B, you know, when you go to the eye doctor, they're like, one, two. So we've got to see what their preference is, and then use that information for the board to make a decision on.
It might be able to transition some people at some point.
Well, I think it's also important to just see what the pandemic and the effect that it had on our mental health as well as our physical health. And so I think pointing out how much more we contribute to our health, medical, is probably a lot bigger now than it used to be. And so, you know, I agree with Louis. I think we need to stop using the word hidden and just show the whole of, because there was something else somebody mentioned about bonuses. But then we had mentioned, it's nice to get the bonus, right? I know that there's other school districts that are doing bonuses. But we're, we also do things like giving the two thousand dollar raise that the governor did not give. And that over time is actually much better than a one-time bonus. But these are the things that I think have to be talked about, have to be discussed on a regular basis, so people do realize what they're getting, so. And I want to thank Ms. Broom and Ms. Walker for another incredible report. I'm always so impressed with you both, with your knowledge, with your skill base, how you're able to put it on paper in a way that makes complete sense, that makes numbers actually interesting to me, because usually they are not. And so I just want to point out how lucky I think we are to have you on our team. And thank you so much for this report.
Thank you.
All righty, and then we have our monthly data reports, just for information. But was there any questions or?
And I'll just, yeah, and I'll just highlight to the board, I did not have academic data included for any of the schools at the time, because they're in the middle of giving MAP tests. But I felt like that we'll let November kind of go through without academic data. It will come back in January, and we'll have a good mid-year check on where our students were from the beginning of the year to mid-year with their MAP updates. The high school did include student achievement data. They didn't last month because of where they were with getting, ready to report progress on report cards. The high school does have academic data in this report, so that's just the difference from previous reports.
And what feedback, if any, are you getting from the principals on submitting this report?
They haven't gotten any negative feedback.
I'm curious, because I know this is something that they weren't necessarily used to doing. But it, you know, it's, like we said before, it just gives us this picture versus, you know, we see it one time in January and then see it again in August. And then there's, you know, all this work we have to do to try to make up. And so we really are able to see it from month to month. So there, it's incredibly helpful, and so.
And I hope you guys enjoy the pictures that they've started putting in there. What happens with principals and what you will see is, once they see, oh, well, Polly put pictures in hers, well, now I have to put pictures in mine. So I've got to make sure I limit them on, hey, don't go too out there.
Nice little healthy competition. Well, awesome. All right, so we are done there, and then future.
There's just some informational dates on there to get on your calendars, particularly as we look forward to spring. So just FYI on those. And then Carmen and Hans, I'll reach out to you because over the next couple weeks, we also need to schedule when, how we're going to do our one-on-ones before board meeting, because I typically do a one-on-one meeting with each board member. So I'll reach out and we'll discuss, to get that on your calendar at a time that works for you. That's all I have today.
Oh, yeah, all right. So any more comments before we adjourn? Thank you again, everyone, for joining us this evening. Have a wonderful holiday season. Be safe, be kind. Good night.